Yeah, trustees meet. I thought that's what we agreed that they would. And I don't think.
So it would be August fourteenth. August fourteenth is the time.
Okay. Library trustees.
George, correspondence, please.
Nothing formal. There was one that came across the desk. I try to let everyone know when there's library news that breaks. We just had an alert from the town of Dudley that they're closing their library as of Saturday due to a failed override.
Oh, my god.
They got an updated assessment from their school district, which they share with, I believe, Clinton, Massachusetts, coming in with an extra eight hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars above what had already been assessed at town meeting. So they had an override vote and it was voted down at town meeting. So as a result of that, they're gonna try and have a second vote and an override, maybe in August or September or something like that. But the pink slips are already gone out for the entire library staff. So they sent out a notice to the libraries to not fulfill any hold requests from any of the residents of Dudley, and we don't have any outstanding, since they don't know how or when they'll be able to get the books back to us. In addition, officers were fired as well as, I think, a firefighter. So the town is down to only having two firefighters on at a shift. So if they have to respond to a call, they cannot enter a building until assistance comes from one of the other towns in the area. So good times.
And you noticed that they put in the paper about the Route Six work with four million dollars that needs to be done in Westport prior to the vote for the override? There's a multimillion dollar project up on Route Six to get water from all the way up to Linkin Park.
Where did you see that's going?
I saw it in the paper.
It's not part of the override, is it?
No, but that money is going to be spent. It's coming up. And we haven't voted on the override yet.
Sorry, I missed this one. That was, came across.
Chilling.
I've heard of the library.
It was surprising. That was especially because there wasn't, they're actually, the library itself is doing quite well. They had a fifty thousand dollar a year budget, larger than ours in the town, I think it's like thirteen to thirteen-three. So it's not a small, you know, western town, or the Worcester County. The tax base was ten twenty, ten twenty-something, perfect. Higher tax assessments than Westport area. It was a shock.
Some years ago, libraries were not certified. And we were not, we really voted not to allow people to use our library because it was very bad. It's not good.
It's added burden, and it's not just their library isn't certified, it's your library is low, there is no staff. We wanted to extend, do that, so we could send the books in the town. So it's a big problem. But we'll see how it goes.
Director's report, George.
So we actually were able to get all of the circulation numbers in earlier this month, so very happy to see that. Down a little bit from May, but still a lot higher than April. So we had seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven total items checked out with sixty-two new patrons registered, bringing our total to four thousand, eight hundred and forty-two, which is cool. Obviously, if we looked at the year-over-year registration numbers, we're still down like two thousand because last year's sales went in and decided that they were going to get rid of all of the old, old accounts. In the past, the policy for sales was if you had an overdue fine, even one penny, they would keep your account in the computer forever, hoping that you would pay off that one penny. But in the last year, they changed that policy so that after seven years, your account would be deleted due to an updated interpretation of Massachusetts state law in the belief that it is illegal to collect against fines that are older than seven years. So then we dropped from, we're just short of eight thousand, or seven thousand registrants, down to originally, I think we were at forty-four, and we've already added another five hundred people since then. So we're really happy to see that. Family Storytime started back up and did our toddler time programming, but I'll let Bonnie talk about that. Our Murders Mondays Club is doing very well still, fifteen members at our last meeting. Tonight is our next meeting. I'm interested to see how many people are going to attend, as this is the first time all of the copies of this month's book were checked out. So we'll see.
Which is how many copies?
I think I ordered twenty-eight. So I don't know how many people are gonna show up. We do have a couple people who read the book with the book club, but they don't like driving at night, so they don't come to the meeting generally. And then the Friends had their first adult program quite some time, the Beatrix Potter lecture, which unfortunately I was not able to attend, but we had about fifty-five people come out. It was inside, yep. That was a lovely lecture right in the next north room on the history of Beatrix Potter's writing and its impact on society. I was gonna make a rabbit farming joke, but it's gotta be serious for once, so you're welcome. The Friends also did ask me to remind everyone that tomorrow night, we're gonna be having Candido Rose and Band over at the Town Hall Annex at six-thirty, outside or inside, as the weather may be. It's gonna be a jolly good time. I might be doing the introduction, we haven't decided yet.
And that conflicts with the forum on the override that's happening at the middle school tomorrow night at seven, I believe.
We didn't conflict. We had that scheduled before the forum was announced. So when we originally scheduled the concert, we did it specifically to avoid the summer concert series at the Winery and the summer concert series at the Annex and the beginning of the fair. So we did the best that we could to avoid everything, and then somebody put something that night anyways, but you know, it is what it is. Alas. One other thing, which I don't have in here, but we have a special pop-up event this Saturday. Mayor John Bullard, former mayor of the University of Kansas, is gonna be having a book signing and talk here on Saturday. We just got confirmation, final confirmation from Spinner Publications last week, so it's kind of a last-minute thing, but we're very excited.
What time?
At three. I'm not sure yet. We do have a copy that was donated to cover the requirements for book sales in the room, but I'm assuming they're going to be, because what else are they gonna be signing? One would think. But yeah, so we're really excited about that. Our new part-time aide training is going very well. Her previous experience working at the BCC Library was very useful, and she took to the computer system very quickly, because it's the exact same computer system, because they haven't upgraded the dang system in like fifteen years, but I'm not gonna go into that. In underdevelopments, our request to allow library patrons to choose to see the titles of books that have come in for them on hold by email has been approved by the Sales Library Network. In the past, out of the abundance of privacy, they changed how the holds worked, so that if you got an email, it would just say you have something at the library, there's a hold available. But for privacy reasons, they didn't want it to say what the title of the book was in case you shared an email with somebody else, or somebody else had access.
But you could put in your password and still get the title.
Yes.
You'd have to send it out.
Yes, and that's the thing. So there were some people who didn't like having to log in to see, they wanted it to just show up in their email. And there was some discussion about whether or not to allow for that, because it's extra work for the library network, because they have to have an extra layer in the computer system. But there were enough people at enough libraries that did not like the new system, that that was pretty good. So you're gonna be setting it up, so in the future, if somebody would like to get a notice in their email what is available, and not just there's something, check your account, they'll be able to turn that feature on.
You yourself turn it on for your own?
We will have to turn it on for you, yep. These people will come in and say, I would like to see what is sitting. That was the compromise, basically. Just so everybody knows, our Public Computer One has been temporarily yoinked by the Sales Library Network for them to try to fix it. It was working fine, there was just a little bit of a problem with the Microsoft Office license, and I haven't been able to fix it myself, so it is covered by warranty and our computer service agreement with the sales, so they're working on it.
Do they come and pick it up?
They already did, yep. Three other new computers that we have are still functioning perfectly fine, and we have not actually had anybody need to wait to use a computer while number one has been out to service. The door count total for FY twenty-three is forty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty, which is a thirty-eight percent increase year-over-year from last year's. And our total circulation stands at eighty-nine thousand, five thirty-eight, which is a nine percent increase over last year. I'm planning on doing a big year-over-year report review kind of thing, once we have all the finished numbers and the heiress report submitted to Boston, either in August or September. But just as a preview, the number I'm really excited about is our programming attendance number. It's actually the highest it's been in fifteen years. How many people attend our programs? Either our kids programs or the health programs, the grand total of everything. And the thing that is really cool to me is that we have the highest attendance, but not the highest number of programs. So we have more people attending less programs, which I'm really excited about. And in fact, when I say fifteen years, the reason for that is back in two thousand and seven, when North Dartmouth closed their library and the Russell Mills Library closed, there was a one-year blip in our program attendance, when Dartmouth went from three libraries down to just one library, where our attendance year spiked like two thousand for one year. Other than that one year, which was an anomaly, this was the highest attendance programming year we've had in the last twenty years. So it's really exciting to see that. In terms of our buildings and grounds, we're having a little bit of an issue with our children's room display board, which is gonna be a fun project that me and Bonnie are gonna get to do together and have some fun bonding experiences, because it's separating from the mounting that's holding it up, so.
Is this a glue question? Or screws?
So the way that it's being held up is there is these magnetic crimps, or it's like a clasp, I don't even know what the right word for it is, but basically that's like a, I don't even know, it's like a particle board or some type of thing, but it has these crimps that are pushed into it that are magnetic, and that's holding it on to the bookshelf frame. And in a couple of spots, they've actually, there's no grip anymore in them, so they're just pulling out. So it's pulling away from the crimps, and there's nothing for it to actually latch onto. So once Bonnie's done with her fun project that she's gonna tell you all about, we're gonna take the whole thing down and glue it on to the backing, so that way that'll hold it hopefully better.
That's why you say another bonding.
The quotes for the vault and the landscaping we have in our packet, we can take a look at that. I have been trying to recruit volunteers from the local community to help us maintain the gardens. So far, no dice. The lawn continues to be mowed by the Highway Department as they have time. So far, it's been working out for us. The next project we have coming up is there is a leak in the sink in the custodian's closet. It's not terrible, and it is right over the drain, so it's not bad, bad, but it's something we're gonna address.
You should probably just have somebody come and fix it.
We're going to, yeah. We will also be pursuing getting the back stucco fixed, as the Diamond students did not have time as the year ended to finish that off.
George brought up something interesting about, interested about that, excuse me, that we actually used one of that spray foam in there to seal the hole up and then patch the outside, and then pick up some paint to match it. Instead of, trying to find these companies will do it, and nobody wants to come out and do a small job.
Yeah.
So anyway, I'm very interested when George found out.
Yeah, and that was the recommended, that's what Diamond was going to do, once, if they had time for the kids out here. So that's what the suggestion was.
And again, part of the problem is waiting for the birds to get out of the hole.
Yeah.
Do we have anything to bring them back in September?
Depends on what we wanna do. I mean, I spent about an hour walking around with the program coordinator, and you know, there's a bunch of projects that they can do or be interested in. Their big thing also that they would be interested in is they like doing big projects that can bring in all of the different departments to work together to give, you know, the kids as close to a real experience of, you know, contractor with multiple, you know, subcontractors. So they actually did suggest possibly doing some of the work on the walk and the pump house and all of that.
So we're on nail, we're in their range?
We mentioned it to them, but we, at that time, we didn't have, you know, that would be a little bit of work for us, because then we still would have to order all of the supplies and everything and have that delivered, and then they would do the work. So it's, you'd have to, you know, see if that's still the best option for us, or if we should rather go with a contractor to make sure everything's ADA compliant.
And that would be, we would have the funds for that?
We don't know how much it costs yet.
No.
You're right.
We'll get to that when we get around to that. Is that under whole business too?
I think I have it.
I'll just mention it now. I'm kinda tired of this guy that was trying to help us. I've contacted one, two, three, four, five, five other landscaping people, companies that do this type of work. Three are from Westport, one is from Tivoli, and one is from Dartmouth. So we'll be coming down, taking a look at what we want, and we have a copy of the ADA requirements.
These estimates are all for the same job?
Ted, no, that's for the next, next thing.
Oh, sorry.
It's a different job. I'm prepared to jump to the quotes. Or do you wanna do the?
Go ahead, do the quotes. And I've also talked, excuse me, also talked to Caitlin from Brothers. I related to her for one seventy-seven, so I'll stop and talk to her about what we're trying to do. So I would arrange a meeting with her and with Chris from the Highway Department, because he'll be there digging and all that.
So the quotes you have in front of you are from the next, or the last two projects ago that we're finally getting around to now, thankfully. Basically, this is just Clyde cleaning up our garden spaces, mulching them, and doing some edging. There is some differences between the three quotes, as you can see.
Yes.
So the lowest quote is the Long Guy Landscaping, which is seventeen seventy-five. The middle quote is JS Landscaping, which gave us a four hundred dollar discount, and I dropped that down to thirty-six hundred. And then Lees, we just had out last week, and they gave us a forty-five seventy.
George, do these, does that include the bench out there on the bench?
Yes. And the big reason that it's a big cost is also includes the center strip. Unless you wanna leave it, but that's the big question, because we don't actually, there's no clear ownership on it, the school's not doing it, so.
They did start cutting out.
They started cutting that front strip, yeah, but they still have not touched the center aisle at all.
Have we spoken with them about it?
I've spoken with the town, and it's just, it's never actually been surveyed or delineated. So on all of the zoning, this is just one big plot on the zone maps and everything. So there's not a hard line, as of right now, on that side in terms of what's where and what the actual line is, whether it's the near side, the far side, the center strip of trees, it's not marked out.
And I'm sure they don't have a large budget and could easily do it when we can't, the school department.
It's one of those things like, you know.
So you would say that that takes up half of that?
I'm not sure. I mean, I would say probably, just for the sheer space of it.
I will say that they did what we wanted over there.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that means, yes, it's ours, because we told them.
Or at least it's ours to maintain.
The original design, it wasn't.
No, they screwed up, because the elevation went off when they were done.
That was supposed to be level.
Yeah. They built that up too much.
They is not the school.
No, well, it's the, the school building.
The building, yeah, yeah.
Because they were quite surprised when they got over here and had to get the difference.
Yep.
And it was too late then to do anything about it. So should we go ahead and just do that, send it apart?
I mean, it's, it's our parking lot. Nobody from the school side can see it.
Us take care of this center aisle? You might wanna make that motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Hi.
George, it's ours. Okay, we don't have to talk about it anymore, it's ours.
So that's eighteen. Okay.
But then we still have to pick a quote.
The only question I would have, I don't know much about any of them.
No, and there were a couple other ones we called, these are the ones that.
I would like to know that, if they do have insurance.
Good question, Tom.
I would say Lees looks like he does, because it's more of a detailed quote. You don't want somebody to come out here and break their back and sue the town.
No, that's a good point.
Because sometimes you have to pay more for insurance. I'd rather ask them, if they all have insurance, I'd go with the lowest one, the one you feel the most comfortable with.
Well, when we go out to bid, do we have, don't we have to go with the lowest one? No?
You have to go with the one that you feel is the best.
Yeah, but nothing, discount two hundred and eleven. If it was twenty thousand dollars, yes.
Plus, this is gonna be coming out of non-municipal funds anyways, so it's either gonna be state aid or one of the other donation accounts. Because that would blow the entire.
Huge difference, right?
Huge difference, yeah.
Are you done?
Thank you. Okay.
So did we take a vote on that, or just?
As to which one?
Yeah.
We're checking to see if they have insurance.
Yeah, if they have insurance, then they can just pick whatever they want. You ready, Bonnie?
I'm all set. Okay, so the first thing we did last week was we had a book buddy adoption. One little retired, and I was planning out all the closets. I found some beautiful donated stuffed animals, and they were just sitting there gathering dust, so we turned them into book buddies. So the kids filled out a little adoption certificate, and they got to take a book buddy home, and they have to promise to reach their book buddy and take care of them, and it was adorable. We, I think I started out with about fifteen, and there's two left.
Oh, that's great.
And that was just in a week, that was just sort of a last minute thing. Yeah, yeah, we had some really beautiful ones, so that's been really fun.
And they can't return their adopted buddy, right?
They're supposed to keep it, yeah. We don't want to.
I got that sense, but I wasn't sure.
So that was really fun, that went well. The pet photo contest, we ended up with thirty-six entries, actually, it says thirty-five on here, but there was a last minute one that I couldn't open last week, and she resent it. So those are on the bulletin board in the children's section. Filled up pretty much the entire board, it was very cool. So we have the voting starts today. We're gonna have a first, second, and third place, which they're gonna get a gift card, we haven't quite figured out from where. There are little, I should have brought one in. I made little ballots, so you can write each picture that is, because a lot, there was a bunch of staff ones too, which we.
And is it kids, kids voting?
No, everybody.
So we can go vote?
Yep, you can all.
Okay.
Each of the photographs has a number on it, so you just write the number of your favorite photographs next to your first, second, and third place, and then we'll keep track of that. And then that goes through August eighteenth, which is kind of the unofficial end of summer reading. Summer reading officially starts today, actually. I was late coming in because we had our first two people, two kiddos, who, they had already done the entire bingo card. So, yeah, so they got, they got five prizes each, which was very exciting for them. They have little shopping bags, it's very cute. So we start, let me think, the crafts went out today, the take-home crafts for the week. Tomorrow, we have the family story time, so I think it's going pretty well, I think there was like four families last week, so it's a good group. We're gonna have the video, the movie in the afternoon, the family movie. Wednesdays, we have our baby and toddler group, which is really, really successful. We get usually about twelve kids and then their families, so it's a pretty cool group.
It's really close to actually, I was having to cap it, because it's too many kids, so.
For the program, they recommend like twelve kids.
Is that in this room?
That's in that room. So that's been going really well, that started a little earlier. Thursdays, we're gonna start our bedtime story parties, and, okay, so I think that's summer reading.
What time of day is the bedtime?
Is it six-thirty?
Six-thirty?
So we do bedtime stories and lullabies. They can bring their book buddies back if they want.
But they gotta bring them back home, yeah.
Yes, yes, we do, we lock them back.
Did the Friends update? What, did you attend their meeting?
It's this, this Thursday, I think, so I haven't been there yet.
They're all very excited.
Me too.
Let's see some committee meetings. Safety, we haven't really had a chance to get together too much, but what I'd like to do is move it till September. Yeah. If we could. So you and I don't have a chance to get together, and that's. George, you're in the committee, right?
They're right.
And is Sue on that committee also?
No.
Right.
Did I, I volunteered for something last week, but I'm not sure what.
You're gonna do the evaluation of George.
Okay. I do, I did know I was doing that.
I remember your name.
That'll be safe. One of the things I brought up to George, where should we have an AED here in the building? We do have a lot of elderly people come here sometimes. The trouble with having one of those is we have to be trained how to use it. That'll be difficult.
What is it?
Automatic, something defibrillator.
Oh, it's a defibrillator, uh-huh.
The new ones are pretty, they're easier than they used to be, so that if you get a new one that actually walks you through what to do and how to use it, a little robot voice kicks in. I used to be certified on them, but it's been years, so obviously my, I'm not up to date. Basically, it kind of tells you what to do, there's the leads you put on to the body of the person suffering a cardiac event, and then it shocks them to try and reestablish a rule.
When I worked in force with all the schools, Adam, and librarians, Adam, and the fire department actually came along and checked them once a year, just like they do the fire extinguishers and the emergency.
My family gets certified to use that, is it the same as?
It's like the same thing as being.
A CPR?
Yeah, so there's a trainer that comes in, you have to have, you know, get certification on how to use it, and then it expires after so long.
You should bring one person here all the time that's trained how to use it.
Yeah, I don't know how much they actually cost. Every time I've worked somewhere where they had them, there was like a grant that the town got to put them in all municipal buildings, and then they were never replaced, and then they just ran it dead, and it was a.
Well, the batteries are on the expensive side.
Yeah.
The school department paid for the batteries enforcement, but it's like every three years.
Could we, could we check with Jim Hartnett to see if there's grant money available?
Do you need any grants available?
Or does the fire, with the fire department, have access to grant money?
They might.
Board of Health?
We're gonna see why you might too, but.
They have a revolving account.
I'll check with the fire department.
Would that come under monies that, you know, that, the ambulance fund, they have that revolving account?
Will they get money donated to them to take care of smoke detectors and stuff? I'll check with the fire department. Might be a little perplexed, because the chief's retiring, right?
Yeah.
Oh, is he?
Yeah, so they're just talking, I think, at the selectmen meeting tonight about next steps and all that.
They're gonna get a committee together to look, you know, do a search.
How close is the fire department to here? Like a nine-one-one call versus a staff trying to help someone? Like a 911 call versus a staff trying to help someone?
I mean, I haven't had to do it, I'm not sure, in terms of what the response time is. It obviously depends on what else is happening in other parts of the town.
Well, the quickest drive, the quickest is what, Briggs Road?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but they're not always there.
Yeah, and that's the thing, it depends.
Briggs Road, sometimes they're not there because my daughter had an issue on ADI, and her husband stopped in there, and she was having trouble breathing. And there was no ambulance. They told him it'd be faster for him to just drive her to the hospital. So they're not always manned there.
Are there staff people trained in CPR?
Not officially or currently. I was.
Well, is that something we need to be?
Don't need, well, it depends on how much you want the staff to be responsible for first aid response. I know a lot of us already feel we're short-staffed as it is. We know there are little first aid kits here, but it's like the same thing as the question of, you know, whether or not the library should have Narcan on hand. It's like, how much do you want to put the staff in that frontline respondent category?
But almost with every one, you might.
And that's the thing.
That snowball effect, like now you're taking care of all issues.
Maybe CPR, first aid, you know, how first aid, you know, we're not first aid certified in terms of, you know, a little Band-Aid here or there. Somebody comes in with a head wound, I mean, we're going to start applying the, you know, temporary glue.
Well, you're going to maintain until you get help. That's all you can do.
Yeah.
I would think it's the town responsibility to decide whether or not their buildings need things like that.
Okay, I'll talk with, I'll check with the fire department.
Why are we talking about it? Why did it come up? Was there, is it your own concern?
I just brought it up, yeah.
Your own concern, yeah.
Because I know at DFW, they're just, they're getting one up there. Because they have a lot of people there, you have a lot of old elderly people there as well. It's the response time.
Oh, and where they are, yeah.
And your first, and your first five minutes are very critical.
Yeah. The last time I took a training, they were actually updating the standards, so they were actually, were giving up on mouth-to-mouth and just going straight to compressions, which, you know, it makes that safer for the, you know, responder, because then it's like, you know, you get that contamination or just the fluid exchange out of the equation, so that helps a lot too.
I'll look into it, see if, if we need to have one, and then we could always look later if we want to have one. Long-range planning?
Oh, it's going, I can update a little bit where we are right now.
Good, long-range?
Yep.
Okay.
So we're doing pretty good. We're, last time I checked, we're up to, I think, 77 respondents on the survey, so that's good. Hoping to break 100, but we'll see how it goes. It's starting to slow.
Now, how is that 77? Is it write-ins, electronic? It's both?
Both, yeah. I didn't put anything on the survey to keep track of how the survey was getting turned in. So the people who are turning in the print surveys, we're having the staff members put the data into the computer so that it all gets pooled together into one big pond for all the responses.
Has, has Friends done their thing yet?
Yep, yeah. So we had a little bit of a slow rollout, but it has been emailed out to everyone on the Friends newsletter list. So all, everybody who has an email address with the Friends, the Friends have sent it out to them.
I haven't got it.
No, I've never got it.
It was in an email that had a bunch of different things, so.
It was from Fall email, yeah.
From Fall?
Fall, yeah.
I haven't got any from Fall. I look at the newsletter every month when I get it.
In the computer or?
Yeah.
I get it in an email.
There was an email they sent out that had.
That had the survey link, yeah.
I must have missed it, yeah.
I, I have encountered people, I've asked about the survey, and they come into the library regularly, and they didn't even know we're doing one. And I wondered, is there a way that when people come in for a book or whatever, it can be mentioned?
Yeah, we have been.
Because she's, there's two or three people.
If it's busy, they might not have mentioned it. But we have multiple signs up inside the library. The staff's been pushing it at the front desk, so they might have just missed it.
And I've gone on the library website, and I don't, it's not there.
It's on the top right corner.
What does it say?
July 2nd, the mail, the email from Fall with the.
What date?
July 2nd. Sorry, excuse me.
A long-range library survey.
It's, it's on the website?
Yep.
Because I've looked and I haven't found it.
Could it be made at least info and the link on a bookmark to go out?
Well, we have like a handbill that we've been putting in.
Yeah, I've been seeing it at the front desk. It's very snazzy.
Thank you.
And that's from Fall?
Yep, yeah. July 2nd, and it's the last, I don't know if it's last, it's after a few announcements. Susan Branko, president of Fall, followemail@gmail.com. July 2.
If you go into news and announcements, it says library long-range planning survey. It looks different on the phone, but if you're on a desktop, it's on the top right side, right on the main page.
Could you forward that to me?
Which bit, the, this one?
Red, newsletter.
I was doing something. We got like two conversations going at the same time.
What are you, what are you looking for, Don, for the newsletters?
Yeah, just send me the newsletter. I'd like to look at the newsletter. I'll download.
I'm going to send it to you. What's your, I'm sure it'll come up.
Dave, Dave's on?
Well, she has your email. It's in the, um.
Email it to you? Sure.
Please.
So you got 77 responses, but how many notifications actually went out?
I'm sorry?
You got 77 responses for the one plan range, one plan range. How, how many actually went out?
I wasn't keeping track. We were just kind of printing them off and giving them out as we go. So I was not tracking how many of the flyers were given out.
Well, at least 45 of those must be Friends.
Hopefully, at least, I'm not sure. Yeah, that wasn't something we were tracking.
Did you know how many you had before Friends got your link fixed or whatever was wrong with theirs?
I think we were at 60-ish.
Before?
60, 65, something like that. So it's gone up at least under 15 or 20 since then. But we're still working on it, trying to push more. A lot of the Friends are regular library users, so they might have already done it beforehand.
Have you considered, I remember with the last time we did it, we put it in all the boxes at town hall. Selectmen and different boards to make them aware of it.
Yeah, we have it down there, but I didn't put it in the boxes.
We talked about putting it on at everything with support. Did we do that? I don't think I did. I could do that.
I know we sent it around online, but I'm not sure if we sent it to everything with support.
Because he'll put it on, and we keep that there. It stays up there for quite a while.
Yeah, I can put something on TV to email it to them.
Thank you.
More ideas.
Well, that's good.
Dude, I don't know, I'm not, it sounds negative, but it doesn't sound like we got that many responses. I don't know how many went out.
That's why I asked how many went out.
Well, we weren't tracking. We've just been giving the numbers as we go, so, but yeah.
We had 100 the last time.
Yep.
And we didn't have access to the internet, so I guess I had thought that we would have a lot more.
That's a longer survey too, so there might be a drop off in people doing it. It could be. But, you know, so we're trying something different.
I haven't done it. Have you done it?
I haven't. Yeah, we're trying to do more than 12, so staff is still pushing it hard at the front desk to see, you know, how that goes.
What is, I mean, obviously, for data, but what is the message of that? What are you looking for from the survey?
Trying to see what people like about the library, what we could improve on, where places that we can, there already is some useful information in it that we've gotten from some of the respondents already, so it's been useful. And using that to go into our five-year long-range plan. So that's one of the requirements Boston has every fire years, we're supposed to update and have a long-range plan, have, look at what we're doing, where we're going, that kind of stuff.
We had someone come down to speak to us, and she thought it was very important that we go not just to like the Friends group, but try to reach out beyond to the, to get the community involved. Because if they are not using the library, maybe we could lure them in.
Yeah, we are planning a public forum at some point.
We're currently working with MLS, which is the Massachusetts Library System. They're going to send someone out to facilitate kind of like a focus group, open meeting kind of thing, which we're trying to nail down a final date for them. Right now, it looks like it might be a Saturday in August. And that's where that is right now.
Okay. Whole business. Review the meeting room, Paul. I know last month I asked if we could move it off. And I'd like to see if we can move it off another month, because I've been doing actually past few days, I've looked at 30 of the Kushner Somerset Seacalm, Attleboro, Mansfield Park, Baltimore, Hudson, Mass. The only large given to be there is forward regarding, the rest of the similar parts, some a little bit bigger, some a little bit smaller. And I think I found a lot of useful information, but I'm not ready to put it into a recommendation yet. All of them are a Word document, and I kind of pick this one I like, this one I like, this one I don't like, so I deleted it, and so I just got to like put them in a format that people can look at.
Isn't the draft that George did all, kind of that already in a format?
Well, mine was just what we already had, and then just a couple different ideas.
But this was the page about the use of the mantan meeting room?
Yes. That one was just something that I put together to ask for discussion purposes. That wasn't really fleshed out in any way. That was just kind of putting a very couple of small bullet points into the existing policy.
Is that when you did this, January 9th?
No, January 9th is when we added the no-not policy. So that was the last time we actually amended policy as it stands.
So this one in today's packet, different?
The current policy with no, nothing else added or.
Oh, okay, so it's different from last week's, last month, excuse me.
Well, this is the current.
Suggestion.
Yeah, so that one I left out, because we already gave that out.
Okay.
Should we, should we really think about getting something decided in August because of planning for recreation in second half?
Well, right now, we don't have any other requests at the present moment. It's theoretical, so it's up to the board.
But I really think there is some time pressure for those groups, and it would be helpful for them to know. So if we could decide in August, that would be important.
I'm going to pay a vote.
And is that the biggest decision? Or looking for other things through different town policies?
I looked through ours, and I looked through all these others, and there's so much they have, we don't, and we have, they don't.
Yeah.
You know, should we just try to break it down once and just be done with it? You mentioned the books, and I hope you're allowed to sell links here.
If they don't, if there's a copy of the book donated on behalf of the author.
Okay. I mean, that's one of the things, I don't see in our policy, but it's in policies.
It's in there. That, that was something.
I must, I missed it.
Number five, I think.
Nonprofit organizations sponsor programs, I have to disclose, programs related to media, with the expectation that the author will donate a copy of the work.
We had hoped at the time that when that happened, they would just do that automatically, but they do not, so.
So you request it.
They're benefiting from this.
Yes, they are.
The library should benefit of.
And there was a time that partners who had supplied the books and cases of books came over for one particular author, and it was like, gee, using the library for that, they should be donating because that is for profit.
Because a lot of policies, I think, the only people that could do that, make any profit is the library and the Friends.
And ours, there is a disclaimer that it's the Friends and the Historical Society is also allowed to, as it stands at the moment.
And if the Friends sponsored the book signing for John Bullitt, then that would be.
Right.
But it'd be, you know, if he sells 100 books, we get a copy of a book, big deal.
I, I wouldn't look at it that way, though.
That's okay, yeah. That's okay.
Yeah, it's a library.
Yeah, but if the library gets a book.
It was the least we could expect.
Right, right.
And plus, there is a benefit, especially with a book signing of, you know, fostering literature and.
Yes.
And a relationship with the author. I mean, it could, it could come back later.
We felt that it was appropriate.
It is local, I mean, it's Westport. Okay, August. What I'm going to do is put some of this stuff together, and I have it, I'll send it out to you, take a look at it.
Perfect.
Okay.
Because we sit here in a meeting to discuss, it's hard to digest.
No, we need it ahead of time.
I'll get it out there, everybody, within the week.
Okay, great.
That goes in with both of those two, so. Other topics not anticipated. Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn.
Aye, aye, aye.
At 12:50. 45 minutes.